Good evening, everyone. Well, no one here. Welcome to the Ways and Means Committee meeting. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counselor Net.
Present.
Present. Counsel Hogan.
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudis.
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh. Absent. Counsel Field.
Present.
Present.
Could you please read a transfer?
We have $640,000 from free cash to ISD to fund the purchase of additional barrels.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. We have $50,000 from the reserve to IT expense.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $50,000 from the Council on Aging expense to payroll to fund operations for FY '25.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
$858 from ISD expense for a prior year bill.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $251,000 from ISD payroll for ISD expense.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes.
Certified funds, please.
Okay, we have $355,828 for our FY '26 summer youth work jobs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. $30,000 to the School de Pom for the FY '25 Teacher Apprenticeship Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes. And $30,000 to the School de Pom for the FY '25 Mass Alliance for Early College Grant Program.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Other business? All emergency?
We do need emergency.
Motion for emergency on all.
Roll call on emergency, please.
Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent. Counsel Field.
Yes.
Any new business?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll tell about a public property in Parks Committee. Roll call, please.
Counsel Chakoudis.
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Net.
Yes.
Present. Counsel Matul.
Present.
Present. And Counsel Allensohn.
Present.
Right first on the agenda.
Okay, we have a discussion regarding Wyoma Square True Value at 314 Broadway. Order that his honor the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an assignment of a memorandum of understanding for the future sale of a portion of Wyoma Square Municipal parking lot to the new owners of the property at 312-316 Broadway.
Counsel, meaning.
Yeah, the new proprietor and myself have been playing phone tags, so I'd like to table it until next meeting if we can.
Do we have a table? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda?
Okay, we have a discussion regarding an RFP for the multi-service center. Order that the purchasing department is hereby authorized to issue a request for proposals to sell the multi-service center located at 100 Willow Street and the parking lot at 57-61 Liberty Street.
Attorney Lamano, could you explain this?
Late Friday, I received some edits, suggested edits, from the community development department, who manages the property, and it appears it may be a bit premature to issue that. So I'd request that this be tabled, probably looking later this summer to reissue it, which coincides with some ongoing environmental cleanup on site, so hopefully when it does go out, we can report to all bidders, prospective bidders, that the property is clean.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda?
And finally, we have a request from the mayor's office to use the FOIA on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the LINCOM team launch.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business? No? What's the wish of the committee? What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Safety and Public Health Committee for Tuesday, May 27th. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Field.
Present.
Present Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Alonzo.
Present.
Present Counselor Hogan.
Present.
Present Counselor Matul.
Present.
Present.
We have one reappointment.
We have one constable reappointment, Kenneth Grady at 271 Walnut Street.
Mr. Grady, are you here? It's a reappointment. What's the wish of the committee? It's a reappointment, it's not a new one. To you guys.
Motion to re... So he's not here?
Mr. Grady, are you here? I do not see him.
Motion to reschedule.
Motion to table. Motion to table, right?
To table, yes.
To table it.
Second.
Second, undebatable. All in favor of the table? Aye. Post. Reappointment is tabled. Any other... Excuse me. Any other business, Madam Clerk?
No other business.
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
I was thinking you're doing licensing.
Not yet. Almost. Public safety first for a constable appointment. Guess what? I have licensing now.
Yep.
We're gonna have a big...
Right. 27th roll call. Present.
Present Counselor Hogan.
Present.
Present Counselor Net.
Present.
Present Counselor Alonzo.
Present.
Present Counselor Mejimade.
Present.
Present.
Perfect attendance.
Okay, we have a new livery company and drivers. We have Jaleem Garcia, three-circuit out.
Mr. Garcia, Ms. Garcia.
Yeah, they come.
Jelame. Si. Jelame Garcia. Si.
I think that must be that one.
Jelame Garcia. Garcia's?
Usted es Garcia?
There.
Translate this here. Translate this here. Okay.
I'm already obtaining translation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Garcia is here.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, post. That license is granted.
Jeremy Garcia.
Jeremy Garcia.
Jeremy.
Okay. Who's Jelame? Jelame? All three?
We have J-E-L-A-M-E.
How do you spell your first name?
J-E-R-E-M-Y. Jeremy.
Okay. Who's J-E-L-A-M-E?
Oh, Jalome.
Jalome.
Oh, my God. He's father. He's son. He had another job, but he couldn't make it because he worked too late.
Okay.
He worked out of the workforce around nine o'clock.
Okay, so you're Jeremy.
Correct.
He's Jeremy.
Okay. Jeremy Garcia.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Post. License for Jeremy is approved.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Rita Sanchez.
Sanchez is here.
Rita.
What's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Aye, post. Okay, are we gonna revisit Jelame? Jelame's at work, he's not here?
Your son needs to...
Approve that.
Approve it? Okay. All right. We approved all three?
He needs to be there.
Okay. All three are approved. Counselor Alonzo.
All three.
Yep. Counselor Hogan's okay.
Okay. All three, good.
We have signed licenses renewals?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
They can pick up their licenses.
They're ready downstairs right now in the clerk's office. You can go downstairs now. Thank you. We'll take the signed licenses renewals as a whole if we can. What's the wish of the committee?
Take them as a whole. Motion approved.
Motion approved. Second. Any discussion on any of those? None, all in favor? Aye. Aye, post. All four of those are granted. Any other business, Madam Clerk?
No other business.
No other business. What's the wish of the licensing committee?
Adjourn.
Give a motion to adjourn, second. All in favor? Aye. For adjourn. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, May 27th. Welcome to the Personal Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Alensohn?
Present.
President Counsel Net?
Present.
President Counsel Field?
Absent.
Counsel Hogan?
Present.
President Counsel LaPierre? Absent. Counsel Matul?
Present.
President and Counsel McLean?
Present.
Okay. So, we only have one item on the agenda, which is we're going to interview Mr. John Marzick for the position of Inspection Service Department Director of Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Marzick, I'm not sure if I pronounced it correctly. Could I invite you to approach the podium, please? And tell us about yourself and...
Hello. Thank you, Committee, Councilmen. My name is John Marzick. I have...I'm proud to be before you tonight for consideration of this position. I've been a facilities manager and consequently an energy and sustainability manager for my career. I've had a chance to do some pretty ambitious things. I think if you look at my resume, I have something to offer the city that can be of great benefit, and I look forward to any questions you have.
Let's open this for questions, Councilors. I will start the question myself, and then I'll call you guys. I understand you from Methuen?
Correct.
Correct. How familiar are you with our city?
Well, I've been through it, but not as familiar as someone who's a resident, certainly.
Right. As a Buildings Inspector, how would you like really catch up yourself with all of city properties and the city in general?
I, you know, like, let me say that I've looked into it on consideration of this position. I've looked at the role. I see what drew me here is because of the size and the consequence that I can have. You have, under this position, two and a half million plus square feet, over 60 buildings, properties that are managed. I've had an opportunity to do large portfolios, and this is where I think I can make a difference. So, I'm familiar with most every building type there is. I'm familiar with all building systems very deeply. So, it sounds like it's a good match. I'm very much interested in learning more about Lynn. I'm a sailor. I'd like to spend some time on the water, right here, if possible.
Thank you. Councilors? Counselor Field?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marzick, I did review the resume. It's rather impressive for the position. Maybe for Mr. Russo, if he could come ahead. How many other applications were presented?
Sure. Thanks a lot, Counselor Field. Drew Russo, Personnel Director, happy to give a little bit of an overview about the process by which Mr. Marzick has come before you tonight. And as a reminder, the Director of Buildings and Grounds is a Level Two Department Head position that falls under the direct supervision of the Chief of Inspection Services and oversees the ISD Facilities Division. Nineteen candidates applied for the position. We had two posting windows. The initial posting window did yield commendable candidates, but the ISD chief in coming into office really wanted to extend the posting and outreach in order to attract applicants with a higher level of managerial experience. We posted it widely on the city website. We also used our social media pages. The Mass Municipal Association made a very modest investment in Indeed. And at the end of the day, nineteen candidates applied for the position. Five were interviewed by a team that included ISD Chief Brett Bennett, ISD Coordinator Jamie Ceruley, and myself. After two rounds of interviews, Mr. Bennett recommended Mr. Marzick to Mayor Nicholson for his consideration. They met last week, and he's advanced his name for your consideration. And obviously, you know, Mr. Marzick has started talking about this this evening, but he does have a considerable background in facilities management, from the Museum of Science to Staples, Middlesex Community College, and the PBD Essex Museum. And so, he is before you tonight for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Any questions from the Councilors? Counselor Hogan?
I have a real quick question, just to say, I'm very impressed with what's going on here. We had a new Inspection Services Department, as you would say, is under new leadership, and adding this position, I think is going to be great for our city, especially his resume is unbelievable. And to go along with Mr. Bennett, I think this is going to be a good team for the city, and I think this is a good move for all of us. So, just want to welcome you aboard, and thank you. Thanks a lot for applying, and I hope you, everything works out for you.
Thank you, Counselor Hogan. Counselor Net?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question.
Mr. Marzick?
I know you have...
Please.
Your resume is incredible. I really admire your knowledge, your education, experience in here. But one question I want to ask you. This city is a very diverse city, and many people speak many languages here. English is not really...everyone understands. I get a lot of call every time they get letters from Inspection Services. So, what is the best approach, the right approach, to make sure our residents understand? And now, yeah, just make sure they understand completely. So, what would you do?
Yeah, well, I've been, interestingly, in this facilities role, I've had the opportunity to have a lot of people who spoke a lot of languages. They kind of were...this was, a lot of times, an entry-level position. I myself studied French when I was younger. I took Spanish in college for a couple of years. It's something that, you know, you have to use to keep current, and I try to do that. But I plan to continue on that. So, I think you're a very high population of Spanish-speaking people or Hispanic, and, you know, I'm not intimidated, you know, and I'm understanding of language barriers. So, it's on me to listen more and understand and to use whatever means I can to make sure it's getting through, you know, that we're communicating in a meeting for a while.
Okay. That's good. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McLean?
Hello. How are you? I just wanted to know what appealed to you about this position? Why did you apply to be the Buildings and Grounds Inspector?
Sure. I was looking at different things, and that was facilities and energy and sustainability. And this ticked all of the boxes. Because of the size of your city, the size of the facilities, and the impact that I can have, I felt like this met all of that. You know, I've worked for the...an academic institution. I've worked for a municipality. I've worked for the private sector and the public sector, and these positions dealing with the public sector, I found most rewarding. I think of myself in those roles as a civil servant. I think, you know, there's a debt to the community. I think that we expect there to be an efficient and thoughtful use of the funds that go to us, and for every municipality. And if I can save a dollar on energy or in process improvement in the facilities department, that's a dollar that goes to education. And that just feels, to me, very rewarding and fulfilling.
I'm sorry. I also, I heard your word "impact," which was something that was on my mind while you...before I asked that first question. I was wondering, when you were looking at the job, and now that you've been through the process, what are some of the goals that you might have for the City of Lynn as this...in this new role that you're about to pursue?
Well, it seems like there's challenges. That is not uncommon, as I've interviewed in other municipalities and worked in other ones. We're all faced with aging infrastructure. So, I'm looking to understand what is the strongest, the biggest of the challenges that you have. I'm very deeply knowledgeable about the operation of automation systems in buildings. There's a lot of opportunity to do things there that have immediate benefits. Just want to see how things are run and what is the difficulties that are faced, and that's really going to be understood with time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Counselor Field?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Russo, I have one more question, if you could. As far as this being a Level Two position for Mr. Marzick and reporting to Mr. Bennett, the ISD chief, what role or kind of collaboration will he...will Mr. Marzick's role, if nominated...if approved, rather, will he play with Mr. Donovan? Who...like, what's the...how does that co-mingle?
I think that Mr. Bennett is probably the best person to answer that question, just because I think it really kind of relates more to him and his supervisory role. And John Tebow's here in the mayor's office as well, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to defer.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, please.
Brett, you understand...do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it. I mean, I think that ideally, you know, we would have our own kind of goals for the schools that would be needed. We'd kind of generate our own list and present that to Mr. Donovan to see, you know, what may be...show him what our priorities are and see where they kind of align with his. It would obviously be a collaboration, you know, in some of the major goals for the schools. So, I think that with us being on the inside, seeing...deeply seeing the needs that we think would be the priorities, I think we would kind of meet with Mr. Donovan and discuss those.
Okay. So, you...so, anything that you and potentially Mr. Marzick, your suggestions go to Mr. Donovan and not the mayor's office? Is that correct? Is that how I'm understanding this?
Yeah. I would believe that, you know, we would sit down and talk with the capital improvement team and try to get, you know, our goals in line. I know they have their own projects, but, you know, there's always things coming up, as we all know, in these schools, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think things that we see reoccurring, we would present to that unit and kind of work from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. No other questions from the Council? Counselor Net?
Yeah, one last question. Drew, what is the salary for...
Drew Russo, please. Yes. Thank you.
What is the salary for this position?
So, the base salary is just over $99,000. It is a Level Two Department Head position established by ordinance, which means that the candidate has...avails...that can avail themselves of the benefit of the AFSCME Local 3147 candidate. So, Mr. Marzick has a bachelor's degree. That would be 20% on top of that. So, that would be roughly an annual salary of just under $119,000.
$119,000?
Yes.
Plus benefits?
And that...plus benefits. But that is also determined by ordinance. So, the other Level Two Department Heads that start at Step One at the non-tenured rate or the Step One rate, they're making the same salary.
Okay.
And that is the salary that was budgeted for this year and for next year. In fact, there actually is a slight reduction in salary because the prior incumbent in this position had been in the position for more than three years and was being paid a higher rate. So, this actually represents a cost savings for the city. That person also had a master's degree, so there is a cost savings here on that basis.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question with Counselor Net's question, Drew. So, who is the current staff for this position?
So, the position has been vacant. The prior Director of Buildings and Grounds transferred to a position in community development. Laura Stockfish, who is a project manager in the Capital Projects Unit, has been filling in and acting, you know, in the Director of Buildings and Grounds role, providing supervision. So, you know, that is obviously another reason why it was so important to Mr. Bennett, to Brett, when he came in as ISD chief, to really hit the ground running and hire somebody for this position.
Thank you, Drew.
Yep. You're welcome.
Okay. No more...Counselor McLean?
Yeah, just one more question for clarification. I think this is for Mr. Bennett. So, you mentioned the Capital Improvements Department. Am I clear that they are who holds the funding for all of the goals that you and possibly Mr. Marzick will be pursuing?
Yeah. So, for any, you know, long-term projects, you know, they have their funding. We have the funding for all our, you know, day-to-day fixes, and I believe anything under $25,000, we would still handle through our department. But all the funding for capital improvement projects are within that CPU division.
Okay. So, that's why you would have to go to them with those goals, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. No more questions? What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Appreciate it. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Alensohn?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
John Marzick.
Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Counsel LaPierre? Absent. Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Motion to approve. It will go to our main meeting. You're not off the hook yet. We will vote again. Thank you so much. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Present.
Okay. Services Department Head, Mike Sweeney, to tell us a little bit more about what's going on in the coming months and to review the Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the council members. We had a great...I think the weather finally turned out. We had a...we had a lot of rain leading up to it, so a lot of volunteers, a lot of people took part, helped out a lot with the flag into the graves, getting everything prepared, from Boy Scouts to the Lynn Marine Corps Junior ROTC to...and the Lynn Veterans Council was invaluable. We had a lot of help getting everything done. I think it worked out really well. I think yesterday, we had a very good crowd. And if anyone, for the next several days, there's going to be the Field of Flags. It's down in...at the Sunken Garden. I encourage people to go down and see that. And coming up on June 13th, we have our Army Birthday up in the foyer at 11:00 a.m., and it's the 250th anniversary...250th birthday of the Army. And I'll leave it to Wayne Johnson. He's Vice President of Lynn Veterans Council, is here to talk about the parade they're planning in 2026. But we have, coming up this year, we have the birthdays for not just the Army, but the Marine Corps and the Navy, so we're looking forward to that. And anyone who's still interested, Freedom Fish is coming up on July 19th. That's sponsored by EDIC, so we say thank you to them. The fishing...the boats for fishing are actually booked up. They still have a lot of room on the cruise, so I would encourage everyone to reach out to EDIC or our office. We can get you up there. But other than that, that's...and that's a wonderful day of free fishing for all veterans who come down, and there's a cookout. It's a great day.
Awesome. So, I want...I know that we had set up a meeting with Pam Edwards, and you...how did that come out? Are the seniors helping in the Veterans Department at this point, doing some volunteer work, reaching out to veterans?
We had worked with them. We're also talking with...not only with Pam, we had talked to her in general about that, not just that, but the Lynn VA Clinic, and, you know, we had talked about that with you as well. And we're actually working with Chris Gade at his office about getting senior work-off people to come in in our office. One of their...one of the people we had last year who was a senior work-off in our office was a member of Mass Senior Action last year, so it worked.
All right. So, it hasn't started yet. It might be more in the summertime?
Hasn't started yet. But it really will work out well. We appreciate...and any help we can get, we take.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions for Mike? No? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay. Coming to the mic now is Wayne Johnson, Vice President or President of the...
Vice President, Madam Chair.
Vice President of the Lynn Veterans Council.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up yesterday for the ceremony to show respect for our fallen brothers and sisters. It was a great...it was larger this year than it was in the past year, so we're growing and growing and growing and getting the word out, and that's super. What we have coming up in August 6th, we have a golf, a Veterans Golf... ...outing up at Gannon. We're putting out applications right now. They're out there. We're also looking for sponsors to sponsor holes. There's $300, $200, and $100 for anybody who wants to sponsor a hole up there. And all this money is going to go towards the parade that we're having in 2026, September 2026, 250th birthday of the United States, 25 years since the war in terror and 25 years since 9/11. After that, once that is all done, we're going to start working on the monument for Veteran...Veteran Park. That's next on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you so much, Wayne. Any questions for Wayne? Oh, you have another thing?
If I will. June 14th, over at Pine Grove Cemetery, at the back, Veterans...Vietnam Veterans Lot back there, there's going to be a flag ceremony. It's also Flag Day. It's also the Army's birthday to...we're going to be burning, respectfully burning old flags, putting the ashes in a place up there at the cemetery.
And what time is that?
That's at 11:00 o'clock.
11:00, June 14th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for that information. Appreciate it. We also have Mr. Gade coming to the mic to speak about the tax exemption for veterans.
So, this evening at the City Council meeting, there'll be two orders on the agenda to increase property tax exemptions for disabled veterans in the city. This comes through the HERO Act, which the governor passed in August. Counselor McLean, Counselor Meany, and Mike Sweeney have been huge supporters of this. Mike Sweeney approached me probably the first week the new legislation was introduced, and what we're proposing this evening is to double all exemptions that we currently offer to disabled veterans and also add a cost of living adjustment in that as well. So, for instance, currently, 100% disabled veterans receive $1,000 off their property taxes. If this passes, they'll receive $2,000 plus a cost of living adjustment, and that will continue to increase yearly. So, this was, you know, it's...it's a statewide legislation, but you have to adopt it locally. I'm hopeful that the City Council will adopt it this evening. And also, on...under that same act, the state has changed the way that we can process motor vehicle exemptions for disabled veterans. Prior to the passage, you would have to go through a process with the RMV. We're now able to take the same paperwork that we receive for a property tax exemption and apply that to motor vehicles. So, prior to this passage, we only had nine veterans who qualified for motor vehicle exemptions, and that went up to 126 this past year. And we currently serve roughly 270 veterans through...who are property owners and have a VA-established disability.
Thank you so much for that work. That's amazing. Huge. I appreciate that work.
And thank you for reaching out over the past...you know, we've been working on it for a while. Some of the...it seems like it's going to happen quick, but, you know, as long as...this is the first year, FY '26 is the first year that we would be able to take advantage of any of these exemptions, and we're almost there in July, so I appreciate your support.
Yep. Thank you so much. Any questions on that? No? Thank you so much, Mr. Gade.
Thank you.
All right. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you so much.
[inaudible][1403.63]
Like to call the Tuesday, May 27th council meeting to order. Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
Present.
Present. Counselor Chakoudas?
Present.
Present. Counselor Field?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
Present.
Present. Counselor McClain?
Present.
Present. Counselor Meany?
Present.
Present. Counselor Mejimandre?
Present.
Present. Counselor Net?
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh?
Present. Just like to say that Counselor Lapierre is on a scheduled vacation, and Terry Young is on an unscheduled vacation, so.
Scheduled, but not, not to her, no.
Yeah, right, not to hers. We all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Mr. President, can we remember the Castle family and the Vale family?
Accept the minutes from May 13th meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, they're accepted. Communications.
We have a communication from His Honor, the Mayor. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section 3-9 and 10-3 of the Lynn City Charter, I am hereby appointing John Marzak to the position of Director of Buildings and Grounds in the Inspection Services Department of the City of Lynn. This will be effective June 11th, 2025. I am respectfully requesting that the council confirm Mr. Marzak's appointment at your May 27th, 2025 meeting. Sincerely, Mayor Jared C. Nicholson.
So what is the wish of the council? Who had personnel? Counselor Allen Sugg?
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. We had a lively conversation, and the councilors asked Mr. Marzak questions, and also Mr. Drew Russo and Mr. Bennett. I, we unanimously approved to bring it to the main meeting. Motion to approve.
So we want to make a motion to approve. We have a second discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
John Marzak.
Marzak. Counselor Chakoudas?
John Marzak.
Marzak. Counselor Field?
John Marzak.
Marzak. Counselor Hogan?
John Marzak.
Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
John Marzak.
Marzak. Counselor McClain?
John Marzak.
Marzak. Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Marzak. Counselor Mejimandre?
John Marzak.
Marzak. Counselor Net?
John Marzak.
Marzak. And Counselor Walsh?
John Marzak.
Marzak.
All right. I think he's here tonight in the crowd here. You want to come up and say something? Congratulations.
That, that was wonderful. Very proud to be here tonight. Very proud to be considered and accepted for this position. Everything I've seen so far with the people and process of this city has been impressive, and I look forward to serving.
All right, thank you very much. We have a lot of old buildings in this city, and we're going to be counting on you, so.
I am told.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Do we have any public hearings?
No public hearings.
There's no public hearings. Public hearings will be set down.
We have a petition to National Grid to install underground facilities on Pleasant Street and to install conduit to a new switchgear, the location at 44-54 State Street. Petition of Comcast to place one PVC conduit to provide service to 597 Essex Street. Set down a public hearing regarding abandonment of a portion of Franklin Street near the Boys and Girls Club. Set down a public hearing for all extended hour renewal licenses. 53 Commercial Street, petition of Ruben Ramirez to park two commercial vehicles on residential property with a home occupation permit for landscaping business. And at 414 Broadway, petition of Chin Tan Patel to open a Dairy Queen food service establishment.
Dairy Queen, so cool.
Motion to set them down.
Motion to set it down?
Dairy Queen.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, set them down. All right, committees, Ways and Means. Counselor Net?
Yes, Mr. President, our unanimous vote of the committee, I make a motion to approve.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve. Will the clerk read the items on Ways and Means, please?
Okay, we have $640,000 from Free Cash to ISD to fund a purchase of additional barrels. $50,000 from Reserve to an IT expense. $50,000 from Council on Aging Expense to payroll to fund operations for FY25. $858 from ISD expense for prior year bill. $251,000 from ISD payroll for ISD expense. $355,828 for the FY26 summer youth work jobs. $30,000 to the School de Pont for the FY25 teacher apprenticeship grant. $30,000 to the School de Pont for the FY25 Mass Alliance for Early College Grant Program.
Sorry about that. What's the wish of the council? Roll call.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McClain?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Was there an emergency on that, Counselor Net?
Yes, the committee voted for emergency for all, I make a motion to approve.
Motion. We have a second discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McClain?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes. All right, moving right along. Public properties and parks, Counselor Chakoudas.
Our unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public safety and public health, Counselor Field?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one constable reappointment that was tabled. I make a motion to approve that.
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Licensing, Counselor Fields?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a unanimous vote by our licensing committee. I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry, I missed one public hearing to be set down. Also, to set down a public hearing on a proposed zone recertification.
The wish of the council?
Motion to set it down.
Motion to set it down.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Set it down. Okay. Personnel. Count Coco, I think you actually did that already, right?
Yes.
But you wanted to give us a quick overview?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you for everyone who participated.
Okay. All right, Veterans Committee, Counselor McClain.
Okay, I just want to reiterate some of the events that we heard about today. We had the June 13th Army Birthday. That's going to be in the foyer at 11:00 a.m. We also had a June 14th flag burning event that's going to be happening at 11:00 a.m. on June 14th in an area of, which area is it? Vega? What area? Okay, well, it'll be at the funeral.
The Pine Grove Cemetery.
The Pine Grove Cemetery.
Near the Vietnam Veterans Section.
Okay, near the Vietnam Veterans Section, June 14th, 11:00 a.m., the flag burning ceremony. And we also had a fundraiser at Ganon on August 3rd?
Six.
On, on August 6th as well, to raise funds for the, the parade that's happening in 2026. So, and other than that, there was a unanimous vote of the council and a motion to approve.
Okay. Just want to say one thing. Flags can be dropped off at locations, right? Certain locations throughout the year? Just, I get questions about that.
I know, I know the funeral home at 426 Broadway is one location for retired flags.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, could you come up for one second? I'm sorry. We, we get this question in the spring a lot, and some people don't know what to do with them. Maybe some people don't know that they shouldn't be throwing them away. Could you give us a quick thing? Sorry, Counselor McClain, just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you, thank you. The, yeah, no one should throw away flags. They have to be disposed of properly. It's a flag retirement ceremony. There is a, they're, they're burned respectfully. You can drop flags off at my office in City Hall, Room 101, the Veterans Services Department, or any fire station in the, and I believe there's other places. I think Counselor Field was talking. I know the Solomon funeral home will take them at any time. So, but it, the, as far as the city goes, any fire station or my office can take them. So please reach out. We can always do that. Make sure that gets done.
I just have a curious question. Even the little flags? Like, is there, is there a certain?
Any flags, any flag whatsoever. Any flag whatsoever. We'll take them.
All right, thank, thank you for that. All right. So we had a motion to approve, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along here. Do we have any old business from anybody? I think we have some new business.
We have a couple of orders. Ordered that pursuant to Section 19 of Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2010, City of Lynn through its City Council hereby approves the increase of the maximum base of COLA, Cost of Living Adjustments, to $16,000 from the previous approved maximum of $15,000.
Going to ask Jim Lamanna to come up for a second. Maybe just give us an overview, Jim, before we?
This was a recommendation from our retirement board. We have not gone up on COLA since, I believe, 2021. And the, the investments are coming in better than, than anticipated with retirement funds. So there was a unanimous vote of our retirement board to recommend that the council increase that from 15 to 16. I think it went in 2021, it went from 14 to 15.
We've done this in the past before.
Absolutely. It does require a council vote in order to, to occur.
Okay, all right, thank you. What is the wish of the council on this?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, second. Any discussion on it? Counselor Allen Sugg?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we invite Mr. Drew Russo, Mr. President, if it's possible?
True. We want to come up to the podium, please.
So this COLA goes to all the staff of City Hall?
No, no, it's, it's, Attorney Lamanna can clarify. These are retirees. These are, COLA is for retirees in the retiree system, and Counselor, those are handled separately by the Lynn Retirement Board. So that, that's not part of
Thank you for clarifying.
Of our payroll budgeting here.
There was a confusion about it. So my follow-up question would be, how many people would this be? Attorney Lamanna, if you know the number?
I do not know. The retirement board, it is a separate entity from the City of Lynn. They have their own legal council. And they're, they're elected predominantly by retirees. So I do not know how many members.
Last, when was the last time we increased the COLA?
2021 is from the correspondence I received from Gary Brennan.
So it's always like every three, four years throughout that time?
If, if, if our finances warrant it here, because of some investment returns that we didn't expect to have, and some debts that we've been trying to pay off in a timely manner, they felt that they had the financial wherewithal to do that at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Lamanna. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah. Any other questions from the council? So we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McClain?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes. All right, we have some other new business?
Okay, we have ordered that the City of Lynn hereby accepts the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, and hereby exempts $10,000 of the fair cash value on personal property accounts to be taxed commencing in fiscal year 2026.
Going to ask Attorney Lamanna to come up again. Just give us an explanation. Or Chris Gator, sorry.
This may be more appropriate.
Yep, that's fine. Chris Gator could come up. Sorry, Chris, didn't see you there.
So currently, the City of Lynn, we have a $5,000 valuation exemption on personal property. So if, we charge tangible personal property on anything from, you know, computers to machinery, equipment in businesses. Right now, any business in the city that has a value under $5,000 or under does not receive a tax bill. What we're trying to do is increase that threshold to 10,000, which is the state maximum allowed. So it would, it would assist roughly 350 additional businesses. On the administrative side of it, those accounts are usually very high uncollectible rates. There's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes with these accounts for very minimal tax dollars. The city will not lose any money doing this. It's passed on to the higher taxpayers in the class. So to move it up to 10,000 would, is required council vote. But I don't see, there's, there's no impact financially to what, what money the city will bring in.
Okay. All right, cool. Any questions, Counselor McClain?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, how would this benefit the small businesses? Like, by how much money would they be saving?
So it would, right now, the minimum bill we're sending out is about $250 for the year on personal property tax. And that's sent out quarterly right now. So there's also administrative work on their side that requires typically an accountant to prepare a list to send to us with their assets on it. So there's additional work entailed there. We'll still, we'll still do our cyclical inspections and look at those businesses, but they won't receive a tax bill. What we see often is the businesses who would qualify are, you know, some of the small businesses that may change hands two or three times in the course of a year. And like I said, when it comes to like the uncollectibles as well, personal property isn't like real estate where you could lien it and the city has a process. They would have to, you know, go through, is it a civil suit?
Small claims.
Yes, small claims to collect any of the money there. So the 350 or so accounts that this would impact represents about $45,000 of taxes out of $9.5 million of personal property tax. So it's a really a small fraction of the tax.
Okay. But it would be very helpful to small businesses.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right, Chris, thank you. What is the wish of the council on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McClain?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes. Next new business item.
Okay, we have two HERO Acts. Ordered that the City of Lynn hereby accepts Mass General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22i, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Law's Chapter 59, Sections 5, Clause 22, 22a, 22b, 22c, 22e, and 22f, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Consumer Price Index, for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or before, on or after July 1st, 2025.
Okay, Chris, you want to give us a little explanation on this also, please? Thank you.
All right, so 22i of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, also goes with the order you'll hear coming up next. And what, what it does is, under the passage of the HERO Act, which occurred in August of last year, municipalities are able to increase veterans' exemptions. So what we, what the proposal is, is that all disabled veteran property tax exemptions that are currently offered would be doubled, and also there'll be an added cost of living adjustment each year. So to use our 100% disability-rated property tax exemption, that would go from $1,000 to $2,000 for FY26. In addition, we'll add the cost of living once those figures come out. And that cost of living will continue to increase over the years.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you. Any questions from the council, is there? So there's two separate items here, Chris, right? So we're working on the first one and the second one?
Yeah, so the first one, that's going to be the cost of living adjustment.
Okay, all right. So we'll do that one first. What's the wish of the council on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, second. Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre, absent. Counselor Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McClain?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes. Will the clerk read the next order?
We have ordered that the City of Lynn hereby accept General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of exemption granted under General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22a, 22b, 22c, 22f, and 22f, 22e and 22f, by 100% of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in Clause 22J, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025.
All right. Chris, is it the same thing? You want to explain it?
Yes. Now, now this is the section. Yes, now this is the section where we are able to go up to 100% or double the exemptions. So this is the first year that we're allowed to do this, and, you know, with the Veterans Subcommittee, I said, you know, Counselor McLean, Counselor Meany, they were kind of right ahead of it, as well as Michael Sweeney from Veterans Department. We had an early conversation about this, and, you know, I thought it was nothing but positive for the city. We did a similar type increase with exemptions with seniors a few years back, and these really will start to make an impact on people's tax bills, so we'll, you know, some will go from 400 to 800, some will go from 1,250 to, to, where are we at?
2,500.
2,500, and then we have 1,500 to 3,000. So, you know, we're going to, right off the bat, we're going to assist about 250 veterans, 260 veterans, but we also hope that the passage of this will spread the word a bit more that we do have property tax exemptions for those who serve our country.
And those are exemption amounts that you were reading off, not increases, right? Just, will you just read?
Those will be the final results of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, great. Any questions from the council? Counselor Field?
No, I just want to commend our colleagues, Counselor, the Chair of the Veterans Committee, Counselor McLean, and Counselor Meany, and certainly Mike Sweeney for spearheading this on behalf of the city, to serve our veterans better.
Cool, we need a motion to approve the next piece, though, so.
A motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, second. Roll call.
Counselor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre absent, Counselor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes. I always think that the City of Lynn does its best for its veterans, you know, we always wish we could do more, and we probably should be doing more, but I think we got a good group of people here in the city, and everyone's always working on it, so that's a good one. So, we have another item, please. If just Jim Lamanna could come up to the podium and just give us an overview of the open meeting complaint?
We received an open meeting complaint from a constituent, as I know this council is aware, the City of Lynn and Swans are partnering up to try to address issues with Kings Beach. In May of 2024, we received a grant from the DEP, which this council approved and accepted in the amount of, I think, $2.2 million and change specifically for Kings Beach. This particular complaint stated that he reviewed the agendas and the minutes to all meetings since October of '24 to the present, and did not see an appropriation for Lynn's contribution as part of this program. And why he wouldn't have seen it from October till now is because a vote occurred in May. I think he specifically was looking for a reference to the, what was going to, what methods are going to be employed to address the Kings Beach. At the time we accepted this grant, we did not know what methods were going to be, were going to be undertaken, so I'd ask this council to allow the law department to respond to this complaint, that there is no open meeting violation.
Any questions from the councilors? Counselor Allenson?
So is this a similar complaint or issue submitted to the mayor's office, or this is total separate directed to the council?
This is a complaint of the council that the UV mechanics that are going to be undertaken at Kings Beach, he could not find a reference from May, I'm sorry, October of '24 to the present, and he's absolutely correct that there was no specific transfer or authorization of funds for UV method during that timeframe. This money came from a DEP grant that was an amount of $2.2 million that I believe our state delegation had been working on for a number of years, that finally came through in May of '24. So the issue is being brought up, that the agenda and the minutes don't reference this, and when the city receives a grant, they accept it in its entirety, and the city council does not vote on each individual expenditure as part of that grant. Whoever the recipient of that grant is, has a discretion on how to use it. So, for example, when we get Chapter 90 funding to repair roads, the city council will accept that Chapter 90 funding, but does not vote, we want this year, we want Street A, B, and C paved and whatnot, it's accept the money, and then it's up to, in the case of Chapter 90 money, it will be up to the Department of Public Works to determine what roadways need to be repaired or repaved or improved. Here, we received $2.2 million to address issues with Kings Beach, we hired a consultant that has come up with this UV method that they have reason to believe is going to work, and there would have been no, in the opinion of the law department, there was no open meeting violation here, it was properly noticed, it was contained in the minutes, I confirmed that with the city council office, that it was clear that the 2.2 grant, million grant in May of 2024 was unanimously accepted by the city council.
So what are we going to do here, Jim?
So when we receive an open meeting complaint, I have to make about, it needs to be discussed in an open session like it is here, and within 15 business days, which has happened, if you authorize the law department to respond, I will prepare a response to the Attorney General and to the complaining party that is our belief there is no open meeting violation. The Attorney General's Office will ask the complaining parties if he's satisfied, if he's satisfied, and that often happens, then the matter is closed. If he feels, still feels there's a violation, I don't see one here, he would ask the law department to explain any questions they may have to determine if there was a violation. But I do not see a violation here because it was properly reflected in the minutes and it stated in the agenda there would be transfers and acceptance of grants.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? So we're looking for a motion to direct the law department?
To authorize the law department.
Yep, to authorize the law department?
To respond.
Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion, roll call.
Counselor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre absent, Counselor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes, thank you.
I just need to verify one of the new business votes. Motion made by Field, second by Hogan, to order that the City of Lynn hereby accepts the provisions of the Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, and hereby exempts $10,000 of the fair cash value on personal property accounts to be taxed commencing in fiscal year 2026. Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre absent, Counselor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Abstain. Okay, I think we have one more new business item on the agenda, but I have Counselor Madri come on up for a second.
Thank you. So, the office of the Lynn City Council offers their sincerest congratulations to Leslie Greenberg. Leslie, I've known for years, and we just really, as a council, wanted to thank you for all your hard work, in recognition of your activism over the years with the Lynn Health Task Force and the Highlands Coalition. Even though you live in Florida currently, Lynn will always be your home, and we wish you the best in any future endeavors. The Lynn City Council acknowledges your accomplishments, dedication to the community, and overall excellence, serves as an inspiration for all to follow. On behalf of our grateful and proud city, we bestow this official citation on you, Leslie. Please come forward. And if we can have the other city councilors, please come up, and we can take a picture together, thank you.
Although it's been raining for months. Yeah, yeah, it's 90, it's in the 90s, way up such a, it's so hot down in Florida that I'm in South Florida, so, it's a heat wave going on, yeah. Hey.
Lisa, hold on one second, I'm just going, I'm sorry, I'm just going to move this, because I think this is, all right?
It will go straight to Florida.
Nice to see you.
Without the boots.
Counselor Field?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a few things under new business.
Okay.
With the absence of Counselor Lapierre, who chairs the Budget Committee. There will be a Budget Committee hearing next Tuesday, before our next scheduled full city council meeting on the 17th.
Okay.
To discuss the 2026 fiscal year budget, so if anybody has any questions, reach out to Budget Committee or any colleagues in the city council between now and next Tuesday. This upcoming week and next week will be senior week for a lot of our local high schoolers, so we wish them well, we congratulate them, we look forward to their graduations, and we hope they celebrate responsibly. And also, as Chair of Public Safety, there's an announcement from the mayor's office in the City of Lynn next Tuesday regarding the official launch of the COM team that many have been discussing for the past, I want to say, almost five years, and I would invite Mr. Tebow up to discuss that really quick, that'll be next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., that launch will happen.
Sure, Counselor, thank you, thanks for having me up tonight. Yeah, we just wanted to let the community know and all of the councilors know that next Tuesday, June 3rd, the Lynn COM team is going to be officially launching here in Lynn, it's been a long time coming, I know that many of you have been involved in the community conversations that we've had, and it's been something that we've put a lot of time and focus into. The Lynn COM team will be on the streets dealing with mental health crisis issues, quality of life issues as well, it's something that we're very excited about, and we're going to have a kickoff on Tuesday, June 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. down here at the front steps, and if, as long as the weather provides otherwise, in the foyer, for people to hear a little